Call to order the meeting, regular meeting of Board of Alderman, January seventeenth, twenty twenty five, if you will join Alderman Parker in prayer and pledge.
Thank you Father for this day. We thank you for your blessings, your blessings yet to come. We ask you to look over us tonight, give us the wisdom to do what's right for the citizens of Long Beach. We ask you to bless the first responders, our military and their families. For we ask all these things in Jesus' name and His sake. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which we stand as one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and tolerance.
All right, welcome everybody to the night's meeting. Those that are in attendance, those that are watching us. Roll call here, Patrick.
Here.
Pete.
I'm here.
Donald.
Here.
Mike.
Here.
Tim.
Here.
Angie.
Here.
And Bernie.
Present.
All right, we have a full quorum tonight. We have two public hearings we're gonna take two before we get to our regular business tonight. Our first one is at two six zero Alexander Road, assessor to the state of Melody Brown. Motion second to...
Motion.
Second.
Special. The spread the report. You got a motion second spread report. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Notice of hearing was posted on subject property of two sixty Alexander Road, Long Beach, Mississippi on December twenty seventh, twenty twenty four by zoning enforcement officer Dale Stogner, a mail to the Melody Brown estate at two sixty Alexander Road, Long Beach, Mississippi.
All right, we have anybody here?
Pictures are being distributed.
Just... Okay. I know we've got somebody here speak for the estate. If y'all want to come to the mic, I think we're gonna handle this pretty easily.
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to go ahead and make a motion after the recent information that we've been given with them just taking over the property to give them a thirty day extension.
All right, well, let's close the meeting and make that, close the public here and then make that motion, knowing, and let me ask a question before. Thirty days give y'all enough time? I know y'all have got some, some problems with some...
I'm Carla Powell. I'm the executor of this estate. I just received access to the property on December twenty ninth. The gentleman is still there. I'm still trying to get him out, but I have begun work. I have pictures to show before and after of the work that I've done so far. I'm gonna make every effort I can to get as much of it done as possible. It's a huge task in terms of how much trash there is, but also how much deterioration there is in the house.
Right.
I'm gonna make my best effort. I worked all weekend. You wanna see pictures?
And I think, you know, under, everybody here knows the circumstances, the situation there. I think a thirty day grant would, was gonna be no problem for us, and if there's any additional, she's got some folks that's moved in there that had no right to.
Got it, got it.
I thought y'all all...
No, sir, I'm sorry.
I'm so sorry.
No, 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 no. That's why I was paying attention.
And she has got them out. They came down and got water turned on without being able to, if I'm...
Got you.
If I'm correct here. Oh, anyway, you know, we'll grant the thirty days and if, if you, you know, I know you're working on it. We know you're working on it, and I think the board would be very receptive to add additional days if that's what you need, and if that meets y'all's, if y'all are okay with that.
Appreciate it very much.
All right, well, let's go ahead and close the public hearing.
Motion to close.
Got a motion to close the public hearing, got a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now let entertain a motion and a second to allow them their thirty day extension.
That we give them a thirty day extension and revisit this in thirty days.
I would be more inclined to give them forty five. She says she's gonna struggle.
Thank you.
Let's revisit in thirty days.
Well, can, can I offer an, a replacement motion? When, well, in your thirty day or your forty five days, are we saying we're gonna reschedule a public hearing if it's not done, or are we just gonna adjudicate?
I think we schedule a public hearing.
Okay.
Have them come back and give us a bit of progress.
And that would give us a way to clear it out of our system once it's taken care of, and they will be, they will be clear and will be clear.
Fair enough.
I can continue to send Mr. Stogner updates and pictures of my progress.
Okay, all right, and, yeah, that'll be helpful, and, and look, I'm open for the thirty or forty five days. If you making a... I'll make a motion forty five days.
I'll second his motion.
All right. We've got a second motion here for forty five days. Do I hear any more discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You got forty five days. Thank y'all so much.
So much.
All right, second one is at four hundred East Railroad Street, assessor to Earl Shattis.
Notice of hearing was, notice of hearing was posted on subject property four hundred East Railroad in Long Beach, Mississippi on December sixth, twenty twenty four by zoning enforcement officer Dale Stogner, a mail to Earl Shattis at one one five nine three Carling Drive, Gulfport, Mississippi, three nine five oh three.
Okay, I'm gonna take a motion and a second to spread the report, discussion. Hearing none, all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Do we have anybody here to speak for or against? The record show, minute show, we have nobody. Mike, do you have something?
Mr. Shattis came in my office this morning and pulled a permit to demo that building. The conversation is between Mr. Shattis, and I hadn't discovered, or Dale and I have not discovered, if it's his wife or his daughter, who it is. We're having two conversations with people, but he did pull a permit to have it demoed this morning. So at the next meeting, I'll, I don't know how, where y'all wanna go with this.
Okay, well, I'll, any of y'all have any questions? Mike?
I do. If he pulled a permit, does it have a certain number of days for him to...
Well, the permit's good for six months, but it doesn't say how, you know, when you gotta demo it.
And the other question I've got, can you elaborate on the conversations? That are going back and forth? What's the problem?
Uh, he's had so many heart attacks. He's had, he's come in my office several times over the last year or two with neck brace on. She's calling me, telling me that she's taking over the property. She's gonna start running the show. It's a, it's kind of a shifty conversation. It's, it's not a normal conversation.
But it's been going on for two to three years.
Yeah, this has been going on for a couple of years.
It's been going on.
It's in disarray.
She claims he's got some Alzheimer's. He doesn't say anything like that. I don't know who, I've never met the lady. I've just talked to her on the phone.
Motion to close.
Second.
Kind of a crazy conversation.
A motion and a second.
Motion to close in a second. Still got motion, second to close public hearing. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to adjudicate.
Second. Got a motion and a second to adjudicate the property discussion.
I would just say we can adjudicate and then leave it to Mike, you know, on following up on that permit. If action is taken, if not, then, then we can take appropriate action, but you have a year.
If y'all wanna wait till the next meeting, we'll see how it goes in the next two weeks, and if it doesn't change, then we move, we're just moving forward.
Well, here's the thing is, if we ask counsel on this, I believe once we adjudicate, we have a year to go in there, correct?
Yes. Bunch of adjudicator, right.
So, that, that outlasts the, that outlasts the permit, and you'll have, you'll have option between now and whenever.
And, and still come back to us at the next meeting and update us and see if anything is being done, and also inform them that we have adjudicated it, and we will take action to take it down.
Okay, and I mean, I'll give y'all a report next week.
Please do.
Yeah, email us out.
We, we can email y'all something.
Yeah, email us out.
Perfect.
All right, any more discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, that's all of those. We have any public comments tonight?
No, sir.
No public comments. All right, one of the most pleasurable things I get to do and probably tonight is the, the ultimate proclamation for Edgar Reed Lee McKay Day. If, if you'll come forward, Mr. Reed, I appreciate that. All right, can y'all hear me? This, this is one of those pleasurable things that not a lot of people get to do, and so on. On behalf of the elected board here and myself, if you've ever seen a hero before or never seen a hero before, this is a hero. Mr. Reed was a, is, is a World War II vet. He turned one hundred years old last week. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna read this, and then we're gonna talk about some of the things that just went on in his life. Mr. Reed, Edgar Lee Reed McKay was born, born to Edward and Mandy McKay on January the second, nineteen twenty five, and he recently celebrated his one hundredth birthday. Mr. McKay had four sisters and two brothers. He was married to late Addie P. McKay, and let me, and let me say this. I'm gonna talk about Miss Addie too here in a minute, too. For sixty four years, and they are the parents of Nadine, Patsy, Terry, and Johnny. Grandparents to six, great grandparents to fourteen, and great great grandparents to three. What a, what a legacy to leave behind in, in and of itself for children. Mr. McKay entered the army in November nineteen forty three as part of the Fourth Armored Division, Tenth Armored Infantry Regiment that marched through Europe under the command of General George Patton. And rumor was, General Patton's son-in-law was being held prisoner in Himmelberg, Germany, and their mission was to go in Himmelberg and release the prisoners of the POW camp, and his company, A Company, broke the town of Schwan, went heavy, with heavy resistance, then moved on to the city of Jimmenden, and they, where they had to fight their way through Himmelberg. Upon reaching Himmelberg, they were able to open the gates of the POW camp, releasing all prisoners, including the son-in-law of General Patton. And late in the afternoon, while refueling the tanks, German soldiers had surrounded them and began to shoot and throw hand grenades. Then by dark, the Germans had closed in. Their officers told them, every man for himself, either surrender or try to make it back to their lines. And while trying to run back to line with a fellow soldier, Mr. McKay received shrapnel in his shoulder and legs. At daylight, while resting, they were captured by German soldiers. They were taken to a POW camp, Stalag thirteen. I know we've all heard that name, Stalag thirteen, where he was imprisoned for twenty eight days during the days of March twenty seventh to April eighteenth. He was listed as missing in action. Mr. McKay and others were liberated from POW Camp Stalag thirteen by the Seventh Army and were sent to the Twenty Third General Hospital in France, then sent home by Liberty Ship. Mr. McKay received a Purple Heart, a Good Conduct Medal, the European African Middle Eastern Campaign Medal, American Campaign Medal, the World War II Victory Medal, Combat Infantry Medal, Honorable Service Medal, and the Bronze Star. And after being discharged from the army at Camp Landing in Florida, Mr. Reed McKay eventually made his way to the Gulfport VA where he was employed for thirty five years. Now therefore, I, George L. Bass, mayor of the city of Long Beach, Mississippi, with the support of the Alderman, in recognition of Edward Reed McKay's one hundredth birthday and for service to this country, do hereby proclaim, January seventh, twenty twenty five, as Edgar Reed Lee McKay Day. In witness thereof, I hereby set my hand and official seal in the city of Long Beach, Mississippi, the seventh day of January, twenty twenty five. We, we sit here and we look at Mr. McKay, and you gotta remember, Mr. McKay, how old were you when you were, went into the service?
When I was in service?
When you got enlisted, how old were you?
I believe I was eighteen.
Eighteen-year-old man. Eighteen-year-old, from the Greatest Generation. His wife, in nineteen forty five, he exited the military. His wife also served. So, this is a great show of that Greatest Generation that we hear and talk about. This is why we have this freedom we have today. This is why we have the opportunity to get out and vote and attend whatever religious service we want, if we want or don't want to. We've got this because of this gentleman, his sacrifice, to know that he was the one that was wounded in action as a young man. So, I would like to take this opportunity. I know we've got a lot of veterans here from different eras of the military. I would like for y'all to come forward, and let's get a picture of y'all with this. This is quite an honor, I would think, to you as a military, 'cause I know it is to me and everybody else here that has served, to be able to come up and be, and I will say this too, you don't have to have your hat on from the VFW to DAV. If you've been in the military, come up and get in this picture. This is an honor for everybody who has an opportunity to be here. Come be a part of this. Let me say this too. I wanna get this picture, and then, a lot of people don't realize it, and I know y'all up here do, but we have a Gold Star mother here. Son died in action. So I wanna get her up there as soon as we get this picture and have her in it too.
Ready? Gentlemen, right here in the black, just let me move over just a little bit.
Come this way?
Yeah, right there. And in the back, that one, there you go. Are you ready? One, two, three.
All right, with me. One.
On this side of him, bend down there.
Come on in, come on in. Go. One, two, three.
Thank, thank y'all so much, gentlemen, all of y'all who have served. Pleasure for me to be up here and celebrate Mr. Reed and his life here and what he's done for us. Thank y'all.
Hey, Mayor, Mayor Bass. They want a picture with the family.
And we want the family to come up so we can get a picture also, and then I'm gonna ask Mr. Reed if he would like to say something. We're gonna get your picture with all the family first.
I have a proclamation from the Gulfport mayor.
Okay, good deal. Good deal.
Is that everybody? Okay, ready? One, two. Y'all wanna turn that way? Yes, you can point that. One, two, three, four. One, two. Wanna hop in there?
If I have to. I didn't want you to stop me. I'm getting here.
One, two, three.
All right, here we go. One, two, three.
Again, one, two. Perfect.
Thank you. Thank y'all all.
Thank you.
For your service.
Thank y'all all so much for allowing us to do this here tonight. I think it's quite an honor that we all got to share and those of you out there, so we appreciate that. All right, moving along, any amendments to the municipal docket?
I'd like to add one under new business, just a quick discussion on basketball courts.
New business, that'd be number eight. And it's gonna be concerning?
Basketball courts.
Basketball courts.
Mr. Mayor, I have one, and I don't know if we need to do it under the docket of claims or as new business, it's under excess flood insurance for the library.
We take it up under docket of claims and, because it's there, it's something we gotta pay, right?
It's not on the current docket.
It's not on the current docket.
You say new business. Okay, then, under new business, please.
All right, this will be number nine under new business.
Excess flood for library.
Flood library.
That's in a motion, that's...
All right, and that's it? Okay, we've got a motion and second to add as number eight under new business, basketball courts, and number nine under new business as flood for insurance library. And a motion and second to include these?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Hear none, all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, moving on, approved amendments, the Mayor and Board of Alderman, December 17th, 2024, regular and executive session, motion and a second. Discussion and approval. You got a motion and second, any discussion? Hear none, all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have approved docket of claims number 010725, a motion and second, discussion and approval?
No question.
Got a motion and second, any discussion? Hear none, all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have a continuation on unfinished business, zoning ordinance amendment. Are we ready with this?
Yes, sir, the amendment is completed and I've submitted to Stacy. Because it affects and amends the land use ordinance, it has to go before the Planning Commission for a public hearing and then can come to this board for approval, but they have it now.
They have it and they're ready for it, so we move forward. Okay, thank you and Mike for working on that for. So we should have that after the next Planning Commission meeting.
That's correct.
Okay, all right. Moving on, under new business, we have a memorandum of understanding for ARPA and McQuay-funded projects.
Some move.
Got a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Hear none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have Willow Creek Road Easement Parking, Alderman Brown, discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Let me get a motion, second discussion.
Motion.
Second.
All right, motion and second discussion, move forward now.
I've had some inquiries, complaints about this car lot on the corner, parking on the roadway.
Willow and Creek and Pineville Road.
Correct. And also twice, vehicles been parked up against the stop sign. So I've been in touch with Mike, and I think Mike has talked to him beforehand, but it seems to last a little while. I'd like to see if we couldn't get those vehicles removed by whoever, the police department, and put up no parking signs. On that, that's the city, that's a city easement there, because it seems to last for a month or two and then to go right back to it, correct?
Correct. Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
Second.
All right, we got a motion and a second to put up parking signs, work through the police department with Public Works. I would say we put a sign up further to the south, no parking north of this.
To the stop sign.
Right.
Correct.
Okay, so, any further discussion? Hear none, all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have shooter-ready update ordinance and amendment. Are we ready for that, aren't we?
Yeah, so you've been given a copy of that, I think, earlier today. What the ordinance does is it amends, as I mentioned at our last meeting, it amends Section 2410 of our Code of Ordinances dealing with the discharging of firearms within the city limits and accepts from that prohibition any duly authorized, permitted, and licensed indoor shooting gallery. The ordinance itself also requires and authorizes the Chief of Police, the Fire Department Chief, and the Building Code Officer to work together to establish some rules and regulations and regarding the criteria for permitting an inspection.
Okay.
It empowers them to do that.
All right. Hearing this, then, I would entertain a motion and second to adopt the ordinance. And any? Roll call, yeah. Any more discussion? Hear none, roll call, Patrick?
Aye.
Pete, affirmative. Donald?
Aye.
Mikey?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Angie?
Aye.
And Bernie? All right, motion carries. All right, moving forward, we have the Qualls Property Lease Agreement.
The lease, Mayor and Board, have, with some changes that Mr. Alexander and Ms. Griffin requested were made, and I appreciate Courtney's help with that, and has been sent back to them, and we're waiting for their execution and return of the lease to us, if I'm not mistaken.
I heard back from them this week, and they do like the new lease. And I did email that version to all of you. So we just need approval for tonight for the mayor to sign it, and then I'll send it to them for them to sign it.
So I'm clear, the version that you emailed is the current version?
Is the current and correct version, yes.
All right, let me, I have a question. Once they sign it, send it back, then we have an official lease?
I thought we were waiting on the lease with their signature, if I understood Courtney just now. I think the mayor may need to sign it and then send to them, is that what the situation currently is?
Yes.
Okay.
So I just need to sign it?
Or would it authorize the mayor to execute the lease, will then send it on to the Alexanders? But the reason it's not done is they made some amendments and changes to the latest version, to what you now have, that I think is agreeable to them.
If they need to sign it first, I can send it to them tomorrow to sign. And if y'all will approve the mayor to sign it contingent on their signature, then he can sign it tomorrow once we get it back from them.
I don't think it makes a difference legality one way or the other. It's just that there has been a history of changes occurring. Mr. Alexander and Ms. Griffin don't live in the same state, and in the course of the two of them exchanging it, they come up with some new ideas from time to time. It's been difficult getting something that everybody agrees to.
I'll make a motion that we give you permission to approve it barring there are no changes to the email, the most current email.
All right, thank you, Patrick. Have a second?
Second.
Any more discussion?
It's the same, nothing's changed from that map, correct?
No, it's the same. Right, that's the one we had before and we talked about. But you know, Angie, I don't remember, I think you were here when we did it, but I'm not sure. You may have been on the phone listening and not been able to see it, and I apologize for that if you wasn't, but it's still, it's the same.
Same area.
Right, same area. Okay, any more discussion? Hear none, all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have a ratification of a contract with AGJ Systems and Networks. I need a motion and second to spread this in a minute. We got a motion and second to spread, any more discussion? Hear none, all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have a fee waiver request for the rec center for an American Legion for a blood drive.
Some move.
Got a couple of motions, a couple of seconds, I think y'all get approval on this with no problem. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Y'all are cleared. Thank y'all so much for everything y'all do. Next, we have scheduled school board applicant interview. Motion and second, discussion?
Motion.
Oh, wait, we gotta...
I'm sorry, Patrick. Pulled the trigger too quick. All right, we got a motion, we have a second, discussion?
I have some, Mr. Mayor, before we schedule this, I just, I wanna bring up a small point that was pointed out to me by a constituent, and I just wanna bring it up to the board and see if we need to, how we go forward with this. If you'll bear with me for a second here. Under the school board appointment, it's Ordinance 371. I have a copy here, I didn't bring copies for everybody, but I'll pass it down. It, basically, the last time it was updated was the late 80s. In the, in the ordinance, it says that we need to publicize for two weeks straight that we are taking applications. So by law, we did it correctly, but we have in the past three renewals of a person. We have posted it on Facebook and through the paper's website as well. This time, we didn't do it. I don't know if it's an overlook on our site, if that would cause any issues going forward with that. And I'm kind of looking for some guidance from legal, just so we know where we need to do, how we need to correct this, so that we do continue to get good applicants for the school. Even though we don't have direct involvement with the school day-to-day process, we do have a responsibility of appointing members to the school board. So with that being said...
You're correct, Alderman Fraser, this ordinance, 371, was last amended in the late 80s, I think you said. At that time, all the ordinance required was publication in the local newspaper two times, I think, which was done in this case, so it was done properly. But of course, back in the late 80s, we didn't have access to social media and the other media outlets that we utilized and so many of the citizens of Long Beach utilize now. So if it's the will of the board to help spread the word of things like this to the community, I would recommend that you authorize an amendment to the ordinance to recognize those media outlets and include them in the ordinance, so that when we do that, it's not just gratuitous, it's authorized by ordinance.
I, it's incumbent upon us to do that. Some things we've moved in to the new life, but some things we haven't. And this was an overlooked situation here, no ill intent on our part, but also along with this ordinance, any other ordinance that we have that requires that advertisement, that we also do a social media advertisement. That, you know, I know when we were gonna advertise for newspaper print a little later on, that that newspaper has any type of social media, that it should go on that also. To be able to, that should be a requirement that I think we need to look at. And if we're gonna get a substitute motion to include that, as we talk about sitting interviews, I would like for us to talk, take this and get it settled and then set the interview dates, if that's all right with the board.
I will, Mayor, sit with Stacy and with Keeney and try to identify all those places wherein publication should be amended to also identify those other media outlets.
All right, and Hunter, you've got our advertisement right now.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, I also can put that online, as Alderman Fraser mentioned that. I can also put that online, if that's something that's suggested too as well. And also with that, all of my stories, you know, come into Facebook, Instagram, and things as such, and Twitter. So we can make sure that social media atmosphere is liked as well.
Attirated.
Yes, sir.
And that's what we've gotta do.
Yes, sir.
Like I say, we've changed a lot, but we hadn't changed all the way. So you suggested we postpone this until we get it settled, or you want we move forward?
Well, after speaking with council, by our ordinance, we did everything correctly. And we can't, we can't deviate from that, because it is an ordinance. Am I, am I correct?
That's correct, it was properly advertised as the ordinance requires. We just didn't go over and above, which we have gotten a little bit into the habit to do because we've outpaced the meeting of the ordinance amendment, so.
So when we go to amend not just one ordinance, but could we put in some type of ordinance to say when we need to advertise it does go to A, B, C, D?
I think that's what I was suggesting, and the mayor suggested that any place we require a blanket policy.
He and Stacy and Keeney are gonna get together and look at this and do a blanket and then go back and include that in each ordinance that requires it.
Well, and Mayor, too, anytime that is requested of me, I will absolutely provide that service.
Right.
Anytime it's requested of me, so.
Well, Hunter, we appreciate that, I mean, this is something that's been overlooked and...
It is, and it, yeah, and I just wanna make sure that we're doing things consistent.
From this point forward, that we'll cover ourselves in it, so.
Mike, I have a question before you close it. I mean, are we, should we open it for two weeks to do it, or just?
We can't, we can't, we can't.
We can't, because what in our ordinance, we did it correctly, but we also have a timeline as well.
We didn't do it like we should have, but we...
We did it like it was required by law, but we could have done better, and we didn't, and I apologize for that.
But, so...
Point to fingers at me if you want to, you know.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, whether it be through a group like we've done in the past, but I'd like to make a motion that we have a meeting regarding this ordinance or updating it, either through a work session or just on the side, and we bring it back.
All right, yeah, let's do a three-member board committee to work with council and with Stacy and Keeney and, you know, anyone else, maybe Dale, to help pull up those ordinances. So you wanna make that motion?
That's my motion, sir.
All right, we got that motion, we had a second. Do I have two volunteers to join Donald?
I will.
Angie?
Mayor, before y'all take the vote, too, if y'all would like me to come to that meeting to be a part of that one specifically, just for a social media input, I can absolutely be there, you know, to let you guys know that that's...
Donald can make that call when it comes up.
I'll...
So I've got, I've got two people, I have a third one, I got Tim for the third one there, okay. Angie's? Yeah. Second, and then Tim, so. All right, we've got that motion and second to move forward with that. Any more discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Sorry to...
That's all right, we need to take care of, that's some good housekeeping there. Now, we've got to address the date to interview the applicants. So what do we have available before our cutoff time?
We have to have, y'all have to make the appointment at the first meeting in February, which is February 4th. If y'all wanna do next week.
We actually have three weeks left in the month.
Yeah, because they just have to be appointed and ready to start March 1st. March 1st is their date that they start on the school board.
To start, to start.
That's where it's confusing.
So we can do it on the first or second meeting, I think we're supposed to do it on the first.
You have to do it on the first.
Okay.
Have to do it on the...
First meeting in February.
First meeting in February.
I'm good whenever.
If we don't do it before.
Let's start next week.
Y'all have a specific day?
As a matter, just as a matter of discussion and input, I would like to be here for those interviews. I've got a trial that's gonna last four days next week, the 17th, I know it's a Friday, but that would be conducive if the board would consider a Friday, if not, I don't have to be there.
What about the week after?
Close on 20th, the Board of Alderman's meeting on the 21st.
And then there's a meeting here in this room on the 22nd, and then the Planning Commission meeting's here on Thursday night.
What about the 28th?
21st, the 21st could work.
We have a board meeting that night.
You'll be here anyways.
Yeah.
Unless I wanna schedule it just prior to the board meeting, starting at like three or four.
I have no problem with it, it's just gonna be up to the candidates.
That's true.
So why don't we throw out...
Is it the 22nd?
There's already a meeting scheduled for this room for the 22nd, and on the 23rd.
What about the 28th?
I'm okay with it.
I'm good with that.
I'm good, I'm good with it. I'm not good with Friday, Pete.
I understand. I didn't think that was gonna be popular. Gotta check your schedule.
Do you want those meetings to start at five? And how long do you wanna give between each?
You can either do 15 with five minutes.
Yeah, you do 15 with five.
Okay, so every 20 minutes?
Every 20 minutes, we've got three applicants, it should be a quick process. So we've got February the 28th.
January 28th.
I meant January 28th at 5:00. I meant January twenty-eighth, at five o'clock, uh, three applicants at, uh, twenty min, twenty-minute intervals. Uh, is that the motion in a second we have? All right, do we have any more discussion? Hear none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Number eight, basketball courts, Tim.
Yeah, it's just a quick discussion.
Hold on, let me get a motion second. Got a motion second discussion, go ahead, Tim, I apologize.
So I've gotten a few phone calls over the past couple of weeks, since we've been discussing doing, adding more sports out there at the rec center, and had a few people calling, asking about basketball. So I just wanted to bring it up to the board, something to think of in the future as we move forward. There's nowhere in Long Beach that people can go after hours that's lit to play basketball. Everywhere's locked up by the time people got off of work. Specifically, one guy called me, he said him and his son love going after work, and just playing for an hour or so, but there's nowhere around here to do that.
You're correct.
So just moving forward, as we're adding more stuff out there, I, I think that'd be something to look into.
Might be something.
And add lights to... I don't think it'd be very expensive.
We have an outdoor court at West Railroad Park, we could add lights to that if you want. I mean, that's an outdoor, we, we had, we had outdoor courts at, um, Magnolia, but we removed those, because when they had apartments there, they were playing till two and three o'clock in the morning, so those were removed. The only outdoor courts we have is at West Railroad Park, and they're not lit.
No.
For a particular reason.
Oh...
You know, the... Let's just think about this.
Yeah, that's, I got some ideas.
I don't think he's looking for action tonight.
There's a discussion moving forward.
Right.
I think it's a good idea, I mean, you're right.
Yeah, yeah. Anything like that.
All right, you wanna, you wanna, you wanna table this to the next meeting, and let's talk, think about it individually, and bring it back up?
I agree with you.
Okay, so, uh, we're gonna table this to the next meeting. All right, number nine is, uh, under new business, it's added, is flood insurance for the library. Motion second to discuss it?
Second.
Uh, okay, got a motion, a second, uh, discussion, Donald?
So, uh, with the changes in insurance these days, uh, this, this is an excess flood policy, meaning over and above what we have, uh, out there already. Um, this policy went from a direct bill to us, to a direct bill to our agent. Insurance companies have changed up some things, and we just got it today. The agent just got it today, it renews, um, Thursday. So what we, what, let me explain what we have currently, and then I'll tell you about the policy. Currently, uh, we have, through FEMA flood, we have five hundred thousand dollars on the building, and five hundred thousand on contents. That's the most you can buy through FEMA flood. Uh, on our, uh, on our CHUB policy, I'm sorry, through our CHUB policy, we have an excess flood of five, of five million dollars of coverage for the entire city, uh, with another hundred thousand per occurrence on the building itself and contents. Um, this policy was put on, uh, the building, uh, an additional hundred ninety-one thousand, two hundred and forty dollars for the building and contents, and an additional six hundred and seventy-one thousand, eight hundred and twelve dollars for contents. Um, the premium last year was nine thousand, one hundred, sixty-four dollars and fifty-one cents. It looks like we had an increase of just less than six hundred dollars. The new premium is nine thousand, seven hundred and twenty-eight dollar, twenty-eight dollars and sixty-five cents. Um, so my reason for bringing this up is to, uh, let me back up, I apologize. Um, this was added, required by FEMA, um, to be, because we took a grant on this. Um, I bring it up tonight either to approve it at the board's will, or, or get rid of it altogether, uh, and, and save nine thousand, seven hundred dollars. And, and here's my reasoning, where I lean of getting rid of it. Number one, we do have over half a million dollars of contents, and over a half a million dollars in building coverage, that's number one. Number two is, we have just seen that FEMA's really not wanting to pay after storms anyways now. Uh, we witnessed that through our harbor. Um, and what, what we're looking at for flood damage is a rising body of water from outside. Now, that, that's from my experience looking at this, this, that's the reason I would say no. Now, on the other hand, is if we go back twenty years and look at Katrina, uh, talking to the mayor and, uh, Alderman Brown, we had, we did have flood through that building twenty years ago. But I don't know that it's enough for full payout on this, when you're talking about damage in, i- i- in this aspect.
Maybe two foot?
So contents wise upstairs, and so on and so forth.
City Hall, okay, but that was up, gotta remember.
Right.
So that's what I'm wondering.
So I guess my, my point to you is, I, I wanna show you both sides, and then, as a board, decide. I mean, nine thousand, seven hundred dollars for, and, and this is, this is the key part, only, only a hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars on the building, and six hundred thousand of contents additional.
I'll make the motion to go without it.
Second.
Second.
Yeah.
What was the motion, Patrick? I couldn't hear you, but I'm sorry.
To drop the extra coverage.
Okay, we got a motion, a second, to drop the extra coverage. We have any more discussion?
Uh, just one, one other point is, uh, our, our insurance agent was not able to be here tonight, but he's in agreeance with dropping it as well, after we did a review, him and I.
All right, any more discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Donald. All right, next, uh, department business, under the mayor's office. Uh, Timmy and I have met, uh, on a situation at Rita and Joyce. Uh, we've got where we did some storm drains working, drainage work there at Rita and Joyce. We were in people's yard, we affected their sewer pipe. They're having, we had to go in and do some pipe work while we were doing the work, and they're expecting some, experiencing some, uh, some breakdown in the drainage within their property. In discussion with council, we can go back in there, since it was our cause to do this, and I would like for y'all to have a motion, a second, to allow me to get with, with Public Works and with, uh, engineer and David Ball, to investigate this tomorrow, and see what a solution could be, and bring it, bring it back to you through email, and get a ratification, and then ratify the solution.
Go move.
Got a motion, a second, any more discussion? Hear none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Uh, personnel, uh, we have nothing here. Uh, city clerk, annual newspaper publication advertisements, and bookkeeping, a motion, a second, to approve the advertisement?
Motion.
Got a motion and a second, uh, any more discussion? Hear none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Next, we have budget amendment, FY twenty-five, police department and public works, motion, a second, for approval?
Motion. Second.
Discussion? Hear none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Uh, fire department, Chief Skelly.
Everything's good, thank you.
Okay, I just wanna commend you...
Amen.
On the fire, the police department, what they, y'all did at that, that was a very large fire that occurred there. Uh, and you, and, and your, me and your response, the other agencies' help, uh, did a wonderful job there at that fire.
Uh, we will critique that fire tomorrow, and I will let the guys know...
Okay.
What you said, and, uh, I feel the same way. They did a great job, um, they laddered a lady out of the second floor, saved her life. Um, and that engine was there within a minute of getting the call, so those guys went from getting in the truck to saving a life within a minute. So, uh, that, that follows back on their training, and, and they do a great job.
Right, and, and to say that when the, the knock on the door, there was no call, it was knock on the door at station three, uh...
Chief Brown, no, and I know myself, that is a shock, when you're at the station and somebody's beating on the door for help. It's not like getting a call over the radio or the phone. Uh, someone screaming at your door is, is different, it puts you in a different, uh, responsive mode.
Right.
And, uh, they went straight to work and did exactly what they needed to do, I'm very proud of them.
Yeah, I, I am, too, and I thought, you know, Mikey and I can both, uh, see it from our, uh, careers there, what they did, but I just want you to make sure that you and, and every one of your firefighters, uh, know, we appreciate what y'all done.
That, another point, quick point, just for the, so the board understands it. Um, we had a very similar, uh, fire at Arbor Station about a year ago. Those apartments were built after Hampton House, which was built in ninety-five. The international building codes had been adopted in between those two builds. Arbor Station has, uh, fire barrier walls in their attic, and Hampton House doesn't, because the codes are, were different. The result of the fire is, was major. The damage was major difference in each apartment complex because of the new codes.
Right.
So, anytime that we can move up in codes and, and do better work that way, it sure helps.
That, and that's ex, uh, uh, an exact statement that I wanted to make, that that's why we, as a board, we take it seriously when, when codes come up from Mike or from the fire department, to go ahead and enact them and move forward, so we can make sure we get the most up-to-date protection for the citizens that are gonna live in these facilities.
Absolutely, absolutely.
All right, thank you, chief.
Thank y'all.
Uh, police department, chief, you got anything?
No report, sir.
I tell your guys, too, we appreciate them and the handling of the crowds and the traffic that they did out there.
Also their little incident.
Yes, and also, uh, the, the incident that you had on Railroad Street, uh, to note it occurred, what, at five o'clock in the afternoon? And that by ten o'clock, y'all had four arrests? That's good police work, and we thank y'all for that. Tell you guys, again, uh, I told Chief Seal this, and I'll tell you, let them know that we, as a board, appreciate good police work. That's what makes everybody wanna come and live here, that we've got good police work.
We'll do it.
Thank you. All right, uh, engineering, we have a change order, bottom to top construction, Edmond Drive water, uh, improvements. This is, uh, we need to ratify this, uh, we have a...
Second.
Have a email approval on all this, 'cause we couldn't hold up the work. It's a three thousand, eight hundred and fourteen dollars, thirty cents, uh, upcharge on this. Uh, but we feel like we've got the money there to move forward with it, and it's been moved forward. So we got a motion, a second, any more discussion? Hear none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Uh, public works, Mike, you have anything?
We're good, thank you.
Well, I'm gonna add a little kudos to you, too.
New year.
That, that fire, they had plenty of water. Your guys were out there to make sure, checking with the, the, the fire department officers there, and those pumping the trucks, to make sure that they had adequate water prepared to turn on, uh, more wells. So thank you and your guys. Uh, rec, Bob?
We're good.
Good, thank you, sir. Uh, building office, Mike, you have anything?
Sir, things fine.
Thank you, Mike. Uh, municipal court, I know we got something from you, Emma. You wanna share, or make sure that they understand what they're reading here?
Yes, sir, um, this is just a report of collections that was sent in. Um, the total on page three also includes the state assessments, so that is not what is due to the city, but that is the total amount of an individual's fine. Um, for instance, if you have speeding tickets, a hundred eighty-seven dollars, the city's only getting forty-nine dollars of that. The hundred thirty-eight is sent to the state for assessments. So that is the total, including assessments.
Right, okay. Y'all got any questions for Emma?
Thank you.
Thank you so much for supplying us, Emma, I appreciate it. Oh... Harry Harbor, anything? Okay, I will say this, the harbor, they're steadily working down there. The south, southeast, and the, and the east wall is moving forward rather quickly. Uh, it's, it's gonna be great when we get this through, it just takes time, so, uh, but they are moving forward. Courtney, community affairs, you got anything?
Yes, on Monday, a week from yesterday, actually, at five thirty, we're gonna have our small business kickoff meeting inside city hall, if any of y'all are interested in coming, and we'd like to introduce and welcome all of our business owners in the city limits. Um, we're gonna be introducing all of our events that we have going on, and we'll have some fun giveaways and, uh, speakers as well.
Okay.
I have a question, how about potential business owners?
Yeah, they wanna come.
All right.
Yeah, any and all, any and all, they're all important to us, so we want them here to be able to recognize them and talk about things that they doing, and what, what we could do to the system. So, thank you, Courtney. Uh, we have no derelict properties tonight. Uh, I would like to entertain a motion, a second, to go in, executive session to discuss personnel.
Motion, a second.
And, 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 uh, Mayor, there's a litigation matter that I need to bring you up to...
Okay, and litigation, so does that motion, a second, include that?
Yes.
Okay, all right, any discussion? All those in favor, aye? Any opposed, motion carries? Back to the session, no action taken, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries? We adjourn.